Good evening. Welcome to the June 8th meeting of the Lake Mills Board of Education. Our mission statement is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. Could we rise for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to call the meeting to order? Roll call, please.
John Delaney, here. Rachel Davies, here. Robert Imperio, here. Donna Thomas, here. Richard Mason, here.
Verification of meeting notice?
Yes, it was posted on the website in the Lake Mills later.
Thank you. Any agenda revisions? I don't believe there are any at this point. I'll take a motion to approve.
I move approval of the agenda as printed.
Second.
I'm going to second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right. Community input. So state your name for the record and then...
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Campbell. I'm with E S G R, employer supporter of the Garden Reserve. I am the employment support specialist and I'm on the full-time staff. We are a Department of Defense organization funded by the Department of Defense in every state here in the nation. We have roughly 140 volunteers here in Wisconsin that donate their time, their effort, to support the efforts of the Garden Reserve. I'm really here on behalf of one of your own, Cassandra Imel-Cassie. She's currently deployed. She's been four years with the Army Reserve. She's an ordinance officer. She's currently in Kuwait. And earlier this year, Cassie submitted two individuals, your principal and Mrs. Sevrud, for the Patriot Award. The Patriot Award is an award that's granted by the Department of Defense. It recognizes the outstanding support that each one of you have given, Cassie, while she's been deployed. I understand she's so far received 107 Girl Scout cookies from staff and students. So she is out in the field in Kuwait and she's being properly taken care of. The Patriot Award, if you go back in your history, 1775 Lexington Common, where a group of farmers stood their ground against the advancing British, they were called Patriots. And the Patriot Award embodies that spirit. You are very welcome. You are very noble in what you do to support members of the Garden Reserve. E S G R, that's our mission, is to help develop a culture where employers embrace the talent that is brought to your business, to your employer, with all the things that they do. The Lake Mills School District, including the Patriot Award, earlier this year, there was an open session where members of the military, Garden Reserve, could submit their employees for what was called the National Freedom Award. It's a top, it's the highest ranking award that's presented. It's presented by the Department of Defense, the Secretary of Defense, and the Lake Mills School District was one of 69 organizations that were nominated. I have for you, Dr. Mason, this little token here that recognizes Lake Mills as being a Freedom Award nominee.
Thank you. I'll accept this on behalf of the school district. Employer support of the Garden Reserve honors Lake Mills School District. See that? And this is very good because as a veteran of the Wisconsin National Guard, I know how important it is to have the support of your employer. Got that? All right. Thank you very much, sir. You bet.
I'm Taryn Lindman. I'm Cassie Imel's wife. And she wishes she could be here to see this. She wishes when she came and gave the Patriot Awards, she could have been here. But she wanted to say thank you and that it means the world to her that nobody took a second bat of an eye when she got the call and she hadn't been here that long. But she looks forward to coming back and she looks forward to seeing her kids because she misses them greatly.
Is this her first deployment?
This is her first deployment. She was an ROTC member through the Wisconsin UW-Madison, so...
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
E S G R also has a saying that we all serve and we thank each and every one of you for giving her that support.
Good.
Thank you.
Minutes of May 11th, regular meeting, and May 18th, special meeting.
I move approval of the minutes of the May 11th, 2015, regular meeting, and the May 18th, 2015, special meeting.
Second.
I'm going to second to approve the minutes of the May 8th, regular meeting, and May 18th, special meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right. That motion carries. Motion to approve the vouchers and invoices.
I move to approve the vouchers and invoices in the amount of $8,359,300, oh, $803,593.05 for the month of May and the treasures report. Oh, we did not get the treasure report.
We did not have the treasures report.
But the vouchers and invoices.
Second.
I'm going to second to approve the vouchers and invoices for the month of May. Any discussion? Treasuries report is yet to come. Could we have roll call, please?
John Delaney, aye. Rachel Davies, aye. Robert Imperio, aye. Donna Thomas, aye. Richard Mason, aye.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Administrator reports. Mrs. Thompson.
Good evening. To follow up on the earlier award, Ms. Imel is going to be visiting us virtually at our Friday Assembly this coming Friday. So we're going to be able to FaceTime or Skype in with her so she can tell us a little bit about her time in Kuwait and the things that her and her troops are doing. We are also collecting items for our care package that went home to all of our parents today in one of our Monday messages. So there's different things that her and her unit could benefit from if we want to send those things in. We'll also post something on our Facebook page if community members want to send anything in for the care package for Ms. Imel. At your places tonight, I put our student handbook. This year, we tried to create a handbook that was more user-friendly for our parents. So we changed the format of it just a little bit. So on the front, you'll see kind of a table of contents of what's inside of the handbook. We also put our school theme. Each year, our staff vote on a school theme, and this coming school year, it's going to be "Learning Can Take Us Anywhere," a bit of a travel theme. Inside of the handbook, I highlighted in yellow anything that was a new addition. You'll see on the first page, this is probably the biggest change that was made, quick information for parents to be able to access throughout the year about our school hours, contact information, the dress code, and then our philosophy of teaching and learning. Throughout the pages, I also just changed some of the headers and those are highlighted in yellow. So as you review this, if you have any questions, please feel free to give me a call or send me an email or meet with me if you have any questions about the contents of the handbook. Other than that, we are finishing up the school year. One week left, and we're looking forward to a strong end for our staff and for our students. It has been an amazing year of firsts for all of us in our new school, so we're looking forward to this final week. Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Nicholson.
Well, I might do a little revision of our handbook now that I've seen Amanda's because we two are moving away from the agendas because students are primarily using their devices to organize themselves. So we typically don't have any datebooks for them, or they don't use them. We find them in the lost and found all the time. So that used to be in the front of our handbook. It won't be in the front of our handbook next year. I didn't do it in color. I just did grayscale, very minor changes. And the one thing that I might have some adding to do would be the dress code. I might have missed a piece or two there because I couldn't find all of my notes from that. So go ahead and take a review of that. There isn't a lot of changes in there. And then I did have, I do have ready for you some, a summary of all of the different committees that met this year and some different changes that'll be occurring with that, but I'm going to save that for my July report along with a summation of our MAP data that we just took this spring. Any questions?
Questions? No answers? All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mrs. Strike.
Well, thank you to all of you for attending graduation yesterday. And 105 of our 107 graduates did walk, and it was a fun day. And I wanted to thank all the staff that went in to, who worked on putting together such a huge ceremony. So it's a really great celebration for the community. But not to be overshadowed, last week, we also inducted 16 members into National Honor Society. And what we're going to get into, the habit of doing, is accepting new National Honor Society people in the spring and then having an induction ceremony right away in the fall. And that way, people can use, you know, their status as being a National Honor Society member as they start to apply for colleges during the summer. And so we're kind of changing the timeframe on that. Classes finished up today, and we had Lessons in Lemonade with Link Crew. You know, it's our freshman mentoring program. So we had 50 kids in here studying together for finals that start tomorrow. And then we'll have Lessons in Lemonade every day for the rest of the week. Since Eli's not here, I have to do the sports update, too. So lots of exciting things. First of all, our baseball team beat Lakeside in regionals. That was very exciting. Our girls soccer team is advancing to sectionals. That game will be here at home on Thursday night at 7:00, and they'll be playing River Valley. And then Ben Dunkelberger, a freshman, just finished up track at State. He got fifth in the triple jump and eighth in the long jump. So we look forward to a great career for Ben here at the high school. And then just a reminder that we'll be starting construction on the high school on Monday, next Monday, and people should watch for signage and notes. And just a reminder, too, that we lock the office door throughout the summer because of our crazy schedules, and people need to come in the front door and then into the office. But all of our hours are posted there, so, and all of our information, if, all our contact information, if someone should happen not to be in the office. So, okay? Thank you.
Questions? Okay, thank you. Mrs. Sevrud.
Good evening. Just wrapping up some community work, we've been, I've instituted some professional learning communities specifically around autism this year and around co-teaching. And we're starting to build our teams for co-teaching, and it's really taken off this year. And we're going to expand those teams to be more district-wide next year. So anybody who's interested. And I'm also going to be adding a professional learning community around English language learning and the professional best practices that go around that. So we're doing some book studies and some wonderful learning around best practices in all three areas. And then I'm also working right now on setting up our curriculum meetings. We're going to start the curriculum process much earlier this year than we did last year. So on the cycle this year, we have math will be in year one, student services, and human growth and development. So we're actually going to start our meetings in July and August instead of waiting till October. So they'll have two meetings before the school year starts out of the way to pull them less from their classrooms throughout the year, trying to get them with their students as much as possible. That's all I have.
Questions? Thank you.
Awesome.
Mr.?
Chady's not here.
Yeah.
And then discussion on food service.
Yeah, oh...
So tonight, I opened the bid for the first time. I've never done that before.
All right. Okay.
So we have bids from three companies, from Aviance, Arbor, and Taher. And Bob will be going through them with the committee later this week. And it's my understanding that next Monday, we'll be having interviews with the companies that are accepted to interview with the committee. And I know the committee involves the principals, involves some parents, I think Rachel, maybe? Myself, as a parent, will be on the committee, and that's about all I really know, I think.
Good.
Any questions about that?
So we won't have full discussion next month or, and possibly a recommendation?
I think so.
Maybe?
Because I think we want to have this process through July so that a new company can come in and start the school year.
I thought the first decision we had to make is, are we going to change or aren't we going to change? And then after that decision is made, then which of these companies? Because the way people keep talking, it's like you just said, we want to have someone in place for the fall. That we want to identify the company by the fall. Well, that's pretty certain.
I thought that the decision was already made, but I could be wrong. I haven't been involved in the process up until tonight.
All right.
Okay?
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. And Mr. Chady is absent tonight because of a death in the family. Mr. Sanders is ill tonight. So facilities report, Mr. Imperio.
The facilities committee met on May 28th. We discussed several items. The first, we discussed the schedule for the various improvements to go on here at the high school. And in your packet is the schedule that we discussed. The items of work include the upgrade to the HVAC system for the core area, the commons, multipurpose room and a band area, window replacement in this wing of the building, lower-level bathroom remodeling, the parking lot expansion adjacent to the auditorium, and the increase in middle school lockers for the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Now, with all of these projects going on, as Miss Strike indicated, that the work is scheduled to begin on June 15th generally, and all work will be, is scheduled to be completed by August 15th to allow an orderly beginning of the school year. The other item that we talked about briefly was the maintenance projects that were included in the budget. And again, there's a summary of those items that was included in your packet. Parking lot repairs and seal coating, both at the lot here at the high school and at the middle school. The technology wing, the lower level, will be re-roofed, as well as upgrade of the HVAC computer system in the high school. That is the system that operates the HVAC system, as well as an upgrade of the generator here at the, at the high school. The final item that we talked about was our long-range facility plan. And again, that was last updated in September 2013. I think it's interesting to note that the majority of the work that has, was called out on this long-range plan has either been completed or is scheduled to be completed this summer. If you can recall that we commissioned the architectural firm, EUA, to do an evaluation of this building. When that is done, the facilities committee will be meeting again and updating the long-range plan, beginning with the 2016-17 school year, and with the possibility of incorporating in some of the findings that may, that EUA may come up with. And then we got a chance to take a look at one of the projects that's almost completed, a new storage building adjacent to the rear of the auditorium. This will allow both the indoor storage of maintenance equipment and provide a dedicated space for set building for the plays at the, at the high school. So that is almost completed. That work is being done separately and not through Myron Construction. So that was, that was the mischief we got into.
Very good. Very good. Questions?
I have a couple of questions. When, when you get the evaluation report that you're having done by Epstein Ewing, will the board get a copy of that?
They will be here at the July meeting to make a presentation of that.
Okay. And I have one other question, and that is that, this is the facilities committee. Do you folks handle the grounds, too? Are you buildings and grounds, or are you just the facilities? And if you're just the facility, who is in charge of the grounds? What committee?
I guess I've never made that distinction.
Okay.
I've always thought that facilities included the sites.
Okay.
So you probably have a question about the grounds, don't you?
I do. I have quite a few, and I want to know if I could come to your next meeting and speak to them.
Certainly.
It isn't only mine. I've had calls from the neighbors and things, and so I've actually driven over there myself. So when are you having your next meeting, and could I come and speak to the committee and ask my questions?
We haven't scheduled a meeting as yet, but as soon as we do, I will see that we let you know.
Okay. Thank you.
Finance report. Dr. Thomas.
All of you got in your packet a copy of the minutes from the finance committee meeting that we had recently. We, and you see things on the agenda tonight to approve the property insurance bids, mostly, you know, the local property, government property insurance, we've talked a lot about because the governor is proposing in his budget that this insurance fund go away. So we've had to look for a new vendor. And after looking at submitted bids, we've kind of recommending EMC, and I think that's on the agenda later on. We talked about food service. This is sort of a perennial issue for us, every school district. It's what do you do when account balances reach zero? And there's still time for school to be in session about lunches, our children, how long can children continue to charge? So there was a lot of discussion, but there wasn't a good solution. So that's just kind of hanging out there yet. We talked about it last year, too, and it just kept staying out there. Mr. Chady talked about the food service bid process, and Mr. Sanders attended the meeting, too. Very little was said about the budget status, but there was a request, and I made the request, and Rachel kind of seconded it, that we get information about the budget, the preliminary budget, before it's brought to us to pass. Because that's what's going to happen next in July. We're going to be asked to present, to pass a budget that we haven't even seen, and we've not talked about any of the things that are involved in it. And I think in past years, Bob, you've kind of asked for more information at an earlier date. So that was brought up again about the budget, so. And that was kind of the, what we talked about. And Rachel, do you have anything to add?
I don't think so. That's a pretty good overview of what we talked about.
Questions?
I do have one. This, this summary sheet, was this a part of your discussion at the meeting?
Yes, it was. Yes.
And there's a number, there's a number of coverages that don't seem to be included. Are those going to be managed separately?
Like...
Are all these, are all these included?
Over on this side of the paper is what we talked about here, where it talks about the water damage and all the different things. This is the detailed one.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
And when we get to that, we'll talk more about it.
Right.
Rachel has been studying that up a lot. That's kind of taking the lead on that.
Okay. Good. We'll wait.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. The Green Ribbon School Event. Last week, we had the opportunity to attend the U.S. Department of Education Green Ribbon presentation for our elementary school. Mr. Imperio, Mr. Sanders, myself, and Teresa Lehman from Myron attended the event, and we received a plaque, and we'll distribute that shortly. But just to give you a little background, there were 58 schools that attended that had won a Great Ribbon Award from the United States, from all the states. There were 14 districts that received an award, and nine colleges and universities for the first time. It was open to colleges and universities. Out of all those people, all, all attended with representatives except one. And this particular award was based on three pillars. The first one was reducing environmental impact and costs. The second was improving health and wellness of students. And the third pillar was effective sustainability education. And the application was a pretty lengthy affair, and it was first reviewed by the Department of Public Construction and then passed on to the United, to the U.S. Department of Education, and was chosen at that level. So the next day, this was on Wednesday, on Thursday, we met with Senator Baldwin in the morning, and then later in the morning, we met with the Congressional Green Schools Caucus of the, of the House. And then in the afternoon, we met with the Senate Representatives for Advanced Energy Design. It was, it was an interesting whirlwind of a couple of days, but we've managed to talk to a lot of people, and they were very, very impressed with our elementary school. In fact, they're planning, the group is planning to come out here, the Green Ribbon people that orchestrate this whole thing is, are planning to come out here and see the school. So that's kind of the bottom line. At this point, we have a presentation to make, and we'll call up Mrs. Thompson and Mr. Imperio.
I can help.
So this is our Green Ribbon. You can see that? That was awarded to us. This banner will hang in the school somewhere, with that somewhere in there.
Find the perfect spot.
All right. Yeah. And then we have this award, which is pretty...
There's a hat.
Sure.
This is the award that we were...
Let me get over. All three of you, why not?
Why not?
This one's slower than my other one. Nice time to find out, right? Looks good. Thank you. All right. And then our Senator Baldwin, we got her to sign a book that will go to the elementary school library called Cappy Times, and it says, "To the students of Lake Mills Elementary Schools, enjoy Cappy Tales, Capital Tales." Tammy Baldwin, U.S. Senator. So she was very gracious in signing that. She was very understanding of what's going on in education in the state of Wisconsin, both K-12 and higher ed. And she was very personable and talked to us actually quite a long time. So we had a good visit with her. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Correspondents, Mrs. Dr. Delaney. Mrs. Dr. Delaney.
Mrs. Dr. Delaney. I have two items. One is from Robin Davidson. To Dean in the school board, I wanted to thank you for the retirement gift. I will be, I will enjoy panel boarding this summer. I also wanted to thank you for allowing me to work 35 years in the district. I feel Lake Mills Public Schools have done a great job educating children, and I have been honored to be employed here. I also wanted to thank you for your, the caring attitude you have for children. I believe my children are successful because of the education they received in our district. Please continue to care about children. It is a benefit for all. Thank you again, Robin Davidson. And also from the Rainbow Hospice Foundation, to the Lake Mills Area School District, on behalf of Rainbow Hospice Care, we would like to thank you for your generous donation of $40 in memory of Dixie Stetson. It is donations like this that help further our mission of caring for terminally ill patients and their families. We are indeed fortunate to have you as a friend of Rainbow Hospice Care. And signed by Chuck Fredsen and Karen Lack Carick.
Thank you. Okay, on to the action items. The first one, approval of 2015-16 property insurance contract. You have in front of you the pink motion. So I'll take a motion at this time.
I move the district withdraw, withdraw from the local government property insurance fund and accept the proposal from EMC Insurance Company as our property insurance provider effective July 1st, 2015.
Second.
I'm going to second to approve the new property insurance contract. Questions? Comments?
Would you like us to?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I should walk through this.
Okay. So, when we met in our Finance Committee last week, we looked at this blue sheet. It has different quotes from several different folks. EMC, CNA, Selective, and Rec, oh, R&amp;R, CNA, CNA, R&amp;R, Selective, right, and Recommended. Okay, so, which is a little confusing, the names at the end there, Selective and Recommended, but those are different companies. And we looked at the cost, and these figures are a little bit different than what we looked at because we sort of dealt, we delved pretty deep into what they included and what they didn't, and then tailored things. And so, the person who was there, working with us, redid this for us, so it was more realistic in what we were looking for. You look at the real and personal property at the top, and you can kind of see the comparison there. And then, what's included, the contractor's equipment, the monies and securities, the additional ordinance or law limit, and flood and surface water. So, all of those things are included. One of them is to be determined with EMC, but we looked at what those really meant, and we still felt that EMC was very strong and, and was the way we wanted to go. Now, you'll see equipment breakdown in a couple of these, they're included, or they're added a fee. But right now, we have equipment breakdown and crime. We have those already with two different policies, with travelers and then citizens. So, that's what we already have established, and when we added those back up into this, it was, still came out to be a better deal. And then, if you flip this over, I know I'm going over this very quickly, but when we looked at the total values of property, what could be reimbursed, if you look at EMC, it's $65 million, CNA was $70 million, and Selective was $68 million. However, if you look at ordinance or law limit, this is what would, Donna, help me, this is what we would need to do to be within the law if we needed to rebuild something or re, remodel something because of fire or flood or whatever. So, in order to bring that up, in CNA, they only allowed $500,000. So, we would be capped at that if something burned and we needed to, to do additional work to be able, to bring it up to code. At Selective, it was $10 million, but the, in EMC, it was included in the limit, so it could all be wrapped up into one. And then, we looked at extra expense, anything that's outside of this, and EMC was the best, or was one of the best with the $5 million, and the CNA was only $1 million. And then, we looked at the deductible, $5,000 versus $10,000, and then $5,000. And then, replacement cost, we looked at that, and then flood and surface water. Currently, with what we have, the LGPIF, it is $1.5 million with flood and surface water. But that is truly, you know, if something drains to, you know, a certain area or whatnot, that's what that, that coverage would cover. So, we talked extensively about, you know, problem areas at the three schools and what we're looking at. Has there ever been, you know, an issue with that, with heavy rain or flooding or anything? And we couldn't really come up with anything where that, where we would need more than $1 million. We haven't had any problems with them. One time, there was a little bit of water somewhere, but it wasn't anything that needed to be remodeled or, or any structural work done. So, it just needed to dry. So, we felt like, the first quote we received was for $2 million on that for the flood and surface water, but we didn't feel like that bumped up the cost considerably overall on the front side. So, when we took it down to $1 million, we had a big discount. The deductible with the flood and surface water is a little bit high, it's $50,000. But again, we were looking at, historically, we haven't had that kind of an issue or a claim, so we didn't need to really worry about it. Contractor equipment, then you'll see that this one is also the highest, but there is a higher deductible, but we felt like that was still appropriate. And they also talked about Dean and, and Bob, they talked about the, what was included. Only two people came out to actually speak with us and look at the facilities, and I believe that was EMC and Selective. So, they were overall very happy with the service and the quotes and what they've been able to work out with EMC in terms of customer service, and the reviews are all high. So, that was our recommendation. Donna, did you have anything to add?
No, this was the recommendation. When all was said and done and the presenting was done, we asked Dean and Bob, what is your recommendation? And they recommended EMC. And that seemed reasonable to us, too.
What are the TBDs? To be determined? Does that mean that we don't have costs for those, those items that are listed in, under the EMC column?
Right.
So, we don't know necessarily? We have some unknown variables there?
Right.
Is that a concern?
I don't think so. I don't think so, because I think some of those were, yeah, they weren't sure what they were going to be, but it was that way with several of them. So, you know, and the bottom line was, we really need to move from LGPIF because their, their price tag, is it doubled?
Well, they're going out of business, too.
Well, they're going out of business, but not only, we could be covered for a few more months, but it was going to be huge increase.
It's hard to believe, but I don't know if that was told to you at the last meeting, but their premium was going from $20,000 to $50,000.
Right.
So, when will those numbers be in place? When will you have that information?
It's what?
The TBD.
The to be determined stuff?
Yeah. So, do we want to get that information before we make a decision?
I don't think it's going to make any difference, Dawn.
But we don't know?
No. Well, they could, they talked about what's projected, and that they thought that that's what it would be, but they didn't want to write it down because they weren't certain. The biggest issue in all of this is the same issue we all face in our home. What to do, what to do about water and flood damage? Does your insurance cover flood damage? And that's what, a lot of time was spent on that, because it's no, we had to add on in order to get any.
We don't know what the final numbers are until we have that information. I'm just pointing out that there are some unknowns here.
What do you mean, the premium?
Yeah, because don't those numbers have to be added in until we know what the estimated annual premium is?
I don't think so. I think that, I think they know.
So, what is the premium?
Premium is, is the premium in the motion?
Do you know what the numbers are?
No, I don't. And I thought that we were supposed to know by this meeting.
Yeah.
So, but Bob's been out since Tuesday.
They didn't give us the exact premium.
Now, the only thing is, we do have to, by July 1, we do have to be switched over. That's the problem.
They were going to have it on this, on this sheet. But they knew it was, they said it was going to be less than what we would be paying to LGPIF, which is $50,000, right, Rachel?
Right, but then you add in all these things down low, and it's a different price, you know, down low.
No, they were going to get back to us on that.
Right.
And put it on the backside of the sheet.
So, so we are missing information.
We don't know, we're approving a contract without a dollar amount.
That's exactly right.
I'm not interested in doing that.
Okay.
I mean, until we get those numbers, I think that would be helpful. And you may be, you're right, it may not, you know, may not fit, you know.
They didn't give those numbers, did they, Rachel?
No, but we asked, and they thought they would have them. I'm pretty sure, I don't have my notes with me, but the discussion was, we would know what that looked like now. But we don't have those numbers.
So, there's a lot of TBDs.
There are.
And as I recall in the past, we haven't approved something without a fixed number.
Well, I, I don't recommend we do either, ever.
And our drop dead date is July 1?
But our drop dead date is July 1.
That's when this coverage needs to take place, needs to start.
And if we don't do anything by July 1, we can stay with what we have. It's just that the premium went up. We can stay, I think it's, first of all, the governor's budget isn't passed.
Correct.
But it's pretty certain that that's going to be gone. Okay, but even if it is gone, we have, I think it's, I think it's up to two years, but they raised the premium from like $20,000 a year to $50,000. I didn't bring the exact amount along.
Is that that?
Yes.
The current year?
The current is 21, and the, and then sub, next one is $50,000 next year.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, so we aren't without insurance if this doesn't get approved.
Were we thinking about having a work session later in June?
I think so.
To discuss post-retirement?
Mm-hmm. So, maybe we could get the information by then and make that decision?
We could act at that time?
I, I think these are the amounts. Rachel, aren't those, are those the amounts that's on the line?
Well, if you follow down in the first column, there's an awful lot more.
Yeah, there are.
So.
But the premium was still 21 last year, and the premium for next year is 50, $56,19.
Okay, so the motion's on the floor to withdraw from the local government property insurance fund and accept the EMC.
Can I, can I add one more thing? I think the thing that's not clear here is, are these, because we started, this is, that's what these companies are, and this down here is this, because we have travelers, we have citizens, are these included in, are they by EMC, or are they by other vendors?
Or are they included in the premium subtotal? Because we don't have an estimated net premium.
Those things were never talked about, Rachel.
Mm-hmm.
But maybe we could have that information before our next meeting?
Right here was where it ended.
We have a facilities meeting in June 23.
Well, that's right, we do.
And I'm not sure about the other.
That's a Tuesday, right?
I guess we do. I forgot, Donna.
Do you have that, Donna?
Yeah, I do. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. And we need to vote in that motion to withdraw from the local government and to go to EMC Insurance Company. So. Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies.
Nay.
Bob D'Imperio.
No. No.
No.
Don Delaney.
No.
Richard Mason.
No, and that's unanimous. That is defeated, that motion. Do we have another motion?
I move that we review this again when we have the unknown numbers in place, so we know what the total premium is before we make a decision.
Second?
Second.
Moving and seconded to, to delay action until we have a firm number. And that would be sometime before the end of June.
Right.
Correct? I mean, that doesn't have to be part of the motion, but any questions on that, comments?
I have a comment.
Yeah?
That just brings to mind when we have motions.
Yes.
See, for contracts, they should include what they cost. So, if someone isn't available, we know. We aren't here to second.
But we don't know.
No, we don't now, but when motions come to us that involve money, we should know what we're approving.
That's not the issue. So, the issue is right now on the floor.
If they had put the dollar amount in the motion, we would know. Right?
So, I think he, I think he has that information.
I'm not sure they have it, so.
That's my comment. I think their mo, I think their amount is there, but I, I'm not sure either.
I think this got printed before he had it, but I think we have it now, but we just don't have it. He's not here.
Okay, so.
Not in my notes either.
So, the motion is to delay until we have the firm number. Any questions on that? Okay, roll call, please.
Bob D'Imperio.
Aye.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
I.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. We will wait for the numbers. All right, approval of a 12-month secretarial contract to Ms. Mary Schultz for the 2015-16 school year, and that is to be paid out of the special education flow through, flow through, three times, real fast. Flow through money.
Okay. Well, I'll move the board approve a 12-month secretarial contract to Ms. Mary Schultz for the 2015-16 school year.
Second.
Second. Jamie, do you have comments on that at all?
Just that, last year, Mary worked probably three quarters of the summer to help with the transition with me to the district, and we found that she was doing a lot of work that needs to be done every single summer. Special education evaluations do not stop just because the school year is out. We're required to do them all year long. So, I gave you some data in the thing that said that, you know, the last two summers, we've had four evaluations over the summer, primarily birth to three evaluations, because we have to have those in place by the time the child's three. Usually, there are school-aged children, and we do those during the school year as much as possible. We have an increase in special education students. When I looked at the data, in 2010-11, there was 168 students, and now we're up to 183. Last year, there were 199. So, the paperwork that goes through special ed is increasing because, of course, it's a government-driven paperwork process. So, Mary is vital to getting all of that done throughout the summer. So, I would really appreciate having that help year-round.
And can you just comment on what flow through means, what that is?
Sure.
What that money is?
Flow through is the federal money, the money that we get allocated based on how many special education students we have every year. And I just got our budget amount for next year, and it's $325,000 in the flow-through budget, is what is expected from the federal government.
What was the number of students you said we had?
We currently have 191, and I think that's, I think she already graduated the seniors when she gave me that number, so.
What percent was that, Jamie?
Oh, now you're asking me to do math on the top of my head. Last I looked, it was 12% of our population, especially, yes.
So, we're getting to the upper end.
Oh, no.
For what's high in the state?
In Racine, I had 18%.
Yeah, but what's the state average?
I think it's around 16 or 17.
Oh, okay.
You have districts like Milwaukee who are at 20%, and Racine and Kenosha who are at 18%.
I was looking for the state average.
So, they sway the state average.
You could probably look that up.
Yeah, I can.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve the 12-month contract. Any other discussion at all?
Yes, I just wanted to validate the request. I don't know how much I can do that, but I know that I have heard from parents who are trying to get through the process, and the fact that we don't have staff sometimes in the summer or to help move things along has been a frustration, so it's nice to see this.
I think there are laws, too, when you have to have the stuff done by. You can't just do it at your leisure.
Absolutely.
Right.
All right, any other comments? Roll call, please.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Bob D'Imperio.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, that passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
The district technology plan. Chris, can you talk to that? And I'll take a motion on the floor so we can discuss it also when, so.
Well, I'll move the board approve the 2015-18 district technology plan.
Second.
Okay, moving and seconded to approve the technology plan. Chris, can you guys give us some update on that?
Sure. The technology plan has been in place mainly for E-Rate purposes, which is federal funding that we get back on things like telephone, our internet usage, and it can go down to servers, which is in the way that communication and stuff of computers work. Recently, they've changed the rules, changed the way it goes. The state implemented a online version now, which I had printed out some of it for you, and you saw it on our website. That was implemented this last period for the 2012-2015 as a standard process by which all schools can get it online, and that way, it's a live document. We have since taken it and moved it to the 2015-18. At this time, E-Rate no longer needs your technology report. However, they are saying now that districts that have ones are presenting a little better as far as funding and that type of stuff, especially for certain tiers of funding requests that you get back. We also needed our technology plan for when we moved our internet. We get our internet through the Teach program, which drastically cuts the cost of our internet for the school district. When I had to move it from our high school to our elementary school, we had to have a tech plan in place in order for us to maintain getting our internet through Teach. So, that's kind of a synopsis of why we have it, what it's used for, and that type of stuff.
Questions?
Chris, do you mind if I ask some questions? I read through this pretty thoroughly.
Sure.
Okay. So, one, one question I had was, one of the statements says, "The iPad sees students," so the, in an effort to maintain the one-to-one student to So the, "In an effort to maintain the one-to-one student-to-technology initiative, Lenovo Chromebooks were purchased in 2014 for all students in 6th through 8th grades." The iPads these students had were youth, or had been using, were then relocated, reallocated to the 1st through 5th grade classrooms. So there are iPads. I've only heard of the Chromebooks, so-
Yes, there are iPads. Actually, the iPads even got moved further now. They are now at least one set, I believe, in every grade level in the elementary school. And the sets contain, I think, about 10 to 15, if I remember correctly.
Okay. And then it further says, "Technology staff included part-time technology coordinators at the elementary, middle, and high school, a full-time district network technician, and a full-time network administrator." So I just wondered, like, who falls under, who are the folks that fall under those titles?
I'm the district technology coordinator. I'll look at Brad Moser. He falls right underneath me. He's a full-time district techno, district technology helper.
Okay.
And then I have Margot Tryndamere at the high school, who is probably a third, say about a third of your time spent with technology. Maybe more now. It fluctuates. That's where the school-
About 1/8.
Right, about the, the school individuals, because they have other tasks, typically each year, they may help out a little bit more, a little bit less.
Right.
But Margot Tryndamere, and then I have Tracy Voight at the middle school, who also is a math teacher.
Okay.
And then Joy Brunner at the elementary school.
Joy, you said?
Joy.
Joy.
Yes. And she's a para.
Okay. And then it says, "The district provided a variety of staff development activities, including technology training after school and during teachers-in-service, or just by, by building as well as all district training sessions." And it goes on to talk about the library-media directors. I just wondered, so is this something we're doing every year?
Yes.
Okay, and are staff taking advantage of it?
We are trying to determine better ways to get more and more staff involved. We recently put out a questionnaire to staff of what they're looking at learning, and also some of the stuff that they're doing, so I can kind of, actually just kind of shoulder-tap them and bring them in and teach other staff how to do it. So yeah, we plan that throughout the year.
Okay. So you're looking at increasing, so it's kind of-
Yeah, we're always, and we have, we have quite a bit of technology in this district, and we really want to use it properly and well. And I know some, some teachers get really frustrated with it, and that's where we shoulder-tap some of those that are using it, and we're seeing it used extremely well, that we just want to bring it into them and show them how other teachers are using it, so they can use it that way, too.
Great. And then I know that a big topic of conversation has been internet connectivity, and one of the statements in the reports is, "Efforts are being made to improve internet connectivity." And I just wondered if you could kind of give us an overview of, like, the different buildings. I know, I have two students in two different buildings, and I know from their perspective, some of the trials and tribulations.
Sure. Recently, well, from when I started, we have, we had a five-meg line coming in, so less than what you got at home for the entire school district. Throughout my years, we are now up to 100 meg's for the district. I have quotes coming to me now for a gig link, so hopefully that price comes fair and we can get that moving along. Where the breakdown starts happening is between the schools. We have a wireless system that connects, connects the schools. That can only handle 750 meg per school, so that's kind of where a breakdown will start happening. As far as the students are going to notice, not really much. It's when those really large files start coming in and coming down that there's going to be a slowdown. Some of the other issues that they are seeing currently are with Chromebooks. There's a help desk that I have open with Google currently on fixing a connection issue with them. So it's not an internet connection problem. It's a problem with Google, our servers, and our firewall, and our filter. So somewhere within there, we are determining where that's falling and to get that repaired, too, so.
Okay. So will that fix some of the, like, dead spots in the classrooms and things like that? Is that kind of where we, because I know both of my kids were doing the Chromebook thing, so-
Dead spots in classrooms, that is wireless internally, and that is something I will be going around again. I went around over Christmas break and filled quite a few of those places in. And then as help desk tickets come in, I can find where other spots are that I may have missed and add more access points for those, too.
Okay. Elementary school cafeteria.
The which one?
The elementary school cafeteria.
There's only one access point there, right now. That's why.
Okay, I think that was, one question there. Okay, um, there's, there's, it also talks about the library-media centers. I had a couple of questions about that, but I'm not sure, is that better for someone else?
I can bring Liz Body up.
Just a quick one. Hi. Hi. So I was reading about, I had a question about the, the collaboration with, I was reading all the numbers and everything, and it talks about the 2012 numbers inside the text, but then you have all those nice charts outside that talk about more recent numbers.
Right.
And then I, I had this question, how much collaboration is done with the LD Fargo Library in terms of textbook resources? I know as both a student of the Lake Mills Area School District, and then also as a parent now, there have been times where the school's locked, it's closed, and we really need access to a textbook. And I just wondered how much in this day and age, collaboration is done with them to maybe provide textbook, or how many of the, you know, are electronic textbooks? Because I'm in elementary school and then 5th grade, so I don't know about, you know, further than that, are, is it all electronic after that, and so I don't have to worry about it anymore, or?
No, it's not all electronic. And actually, that's a really good suggestion, if we could get a couple textbooks into public library for checkout. It's a really good suggestion, but they're-
Even if not checkbook, checkout, but we have to sit there, right?
Use in, yeah, I guess that would probably be better. But they're clamoring for collaboration. They want, they do everything they can to help our students, and they want our students to use the public library. They, I mean, I'm going off-topic just a little bit, but they ask what our main topics are for junior term papers, so they can build up the collection for that. Whenever there's one little problem with a public library card, I know their number, 2166. I call, I have a student, can you help me unblock their, their card? So it's a really good relationship, but, and that's a really good suggestion. I don't know if that answered your question.
It does, yeah, thank you. That was all my question.
Liz, I have a question about databases. Do you, does the library have some access to some databases that are a little harder to access unless you have some licenses and?
Yeah, we have SERs, which is Social Issues Resource Series, and that's one that we purchased at the high school. You can use it at home. I give all the kids a brochure with a username and password to use at home. We have Culturegrams, where it's A to Z World Culture. Again, you need a password at home, because we purchase it. And Classroom Video On Demand, that's mostly teachers use that, and that would be a username and password. But there's a wonderful database called Badger Link. It is just a humongous database that has databases with, you know, it's a big umbrella with more databases underneath it. And I always tell the kids, you know, if you're thinking of doing anything after high school, a tech college or a college, you're going to be using Badger Link, so let's get used to it now and, you know, iron things out, so.
Okay, just wondering. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Donna, you want me to go?
Yeah, go ahead.
I had a quick question about laptops. What do you do with the old laptops? It says that teacher laptops are updated-
Yes.
Every three years? So what, what, how, are they recycled in the district, or are they sold?
Typically, they're sold to a recycling center, depending on, right now, we haven't met that three-year. We're just starting to get that going. So the ones that we're replacing are about six years old or so. So they're kind of struggling as they are. So typically, what'll happen is I erase them to typically a federal standard before I even give them to a recycling center, who then erases them again and gives me a certificate that says they've been erased.
Do we get some funds for the recycling?
Depending on the age of the machine or how usable it is. We did just get a request for some username and passwords for, I locked the machines down completely, so you can't get into the, the backend of it. So I was asked for some passwords to see if those were eligible enough to receive money back for, so, yes. There are some times that we get money back.
I was going to ask you, and I mean, I'm not real technology literate, but I've been involved in these technology plans. And would you say that these technology plans, this one that's here, like others, is really just a required hurdle rather than a meaningful roadmap to the district?
Oftentimes, they feel like it when we're doing it, but as we're doing it, we start looking at it more and realizing, hey, we haven't done this lately. We really need to bring more into that. We've, it's brought up more discussions on how to get the teachers more educated with our technology, too. So it starts out as a hurdle, but as we go through it, it really progresses into, all right, yeah, this is something we can start looking at. And there's been other times where I'll bring it up, just on occasion, and be like, hey, we have it in the plan. We should start looking at this, since it is in our three, three years now, that we should start looking at something like that, so. I, I still don't think it's a complete hurdle, but it starts out that way.
Okay, my other question is, where does curriculum integration, who does the curriculum integration for technology? Who leads that effort?
We, as a committee, kind of put it towards the teachers. I know there's a Wisconsin technology curriculum that, that is now, that you have to meet these certain standards. We, we've had to look at those, and that has been pushed on to the teachers to make sure that when they're talking about curriculum, that those technology standards get inputted into that curriculum, too. As far as who follows up with that, I don't have the answer for that one.
Okay, like, for example, you notice our curriculum is getting more merged in with technology.
Yes.
We had the world language people here the other night, and they're actually going to an online program. Now, were you involved in the selection of that program, or were you there to tell them that our system has the capacity to do it or doesn't have the capacity to do it, or it would do, is our system reliable enough for you to do it? And what are we going to do about the people that don't have it at home?
Sure.
And now, I know we use everyday math at our elementary school. There's a whole parent component there, technology. And I don't know if any parents are even using it or even know about it. Do you, do you sponsor the in-services? I was sort of looking in your plan for-
Sure.
-parent development. Are there workshops for parents every year? And are they aware of how to use this technology at home to help their students with, with curriculum?
Sure. I know everyday math, when that was brought forward, there was a huge, call it an in-service, a huge gathering at the elementary school, piece by piece. It was showed online. I have two students in elementary school myself. They have papers. The older one will come home and be like, I gotta go do this. So she has her password. The younger one, she has her password, hasn't been as excited about it, and starts using it. As a parent, when she first started using it, I found out what trials and tribulations were going to go through, and I had to put some stuff up on the website. It never really got looked at, because I can track that type of stuff. So I, I'd be looking for better ways to communicate that forward if, you know-
Because we've had now everyday math for a while.
Right.
So, I mean, if you have a one-shot deal, you're going to need it every year. And then our website, most school-
Hey, we're, we're getting off the topic here a little bit.
No, this is, I'm asking why this is in the, if it's in the technology plan. That's the plan. I'm asking what's in there for parent and curriculum. There's, it's really more about hardware and software. More so than usage. Now, maybe that's, maybe we're not interested in that. We're more interested in the hardware and software. I don't know.
Right. From what I've seen of the plans, it's more of, yeah, your hardware, software, what are your goals there? And I have not seen from state and federal anything about bringing curriculum into your, into the technology plan itself, but it might be something that to bring up.
Okay, because our website has nothing for technology for parents either, and most school districts do.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, let's have a roll call to approve or disapprove the technology plan. Say it again.
Aye.
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 Aye, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
All right, High School Student Handbook, approval of the High School Student Handbook.
I move the board to approve the 2015-16 High School Student Handbook.
Second.
Moving and seconded to approve the High School Student Handbook. Discussion? Comments? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Bob DiPerio.
Aye.
Donna Thomas.
Aye. Don Delaney. Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, that passes unanimously. Approval of professional contract for Ms. Leann Carlson. She's an elementary teacher for the 15-16 school year.
I'll move the board approve a professional staff contract for Ms. Leann Carlson. She's an elementary school teacher for the 2015-16 school year.
Second.
Moving and seconded to approve professional staff contract. Any comments?
Do we usually get to see the resume or anything when we, when a teacher moves from one position to another?
I don't believe so. When they move from one position to another, we see the resume when they apply for the job.
But this is from special ed to a regular teacher, so.
Questions? Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Bob DiPerio.
Aye.
Donna Thomas. Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of 4K contract with Cool Development LLC.
That was in our packet, wasn't it?
That was in the packet.
Yeah.
Thank you, motion, please.
I move the board approve a 4K contract between the Lake Mills Area School District and the Cool Development LLC for the 2015-16 school year.
Second.
Moving and seconded to approve the contract between Lake Mills School District and Cool Development. Are there questions or comments on that?
And this is continuation of an, of an arrangement that we have in place.
Negotiated arrangement, right.
But it's always, we negotiate every year. The dollar amount changes, but we never get the dollar amount. We didn't get a dollar amount on the teacher we just hired for a contract.
Usually don't get the dollar amount on a teacher.
But that's not what Bob Butler told us we should, when we approve contracts.
What?
Okay, any other comments? Roll call, please.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Bob DiPerio.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of agreement with the Johnson Creek School District for Early Childhood Services. This is a continuing contract also. Motion, please.
I move the board approve a 66.0301 agreement with the Johnson Creek School District for Early Childhood Services for the 2015-16 school year.
Second.
Moving and seconded to approve services for early childhood with the Johnson Creek School District. Comments?
Could, do any of us know what this, I mean, I, I see the bullet points, but what does it really mean? What's the overhaul on this?
Jamie, you want to comment on that?
Can you ask your question again?
Sure. I see the bullet points, sort of who's responsible for what, but what does this, can you give us an overview of what this means for the district?
Sure. Our students who qualify under special education at the age of three, who need, we, not all of them go to Johnson Creek, but it's determined by the IEP team who needs a significant amount of services to be in an early childhood classroom. This year, we had five students attend there. Next year, we're predicting one or two. It's, it's up and down every year as far as how many students need the services. They go for three, four half-days a week in the afternoons, and it's worked out really well, because between the two districts, we have about a full class that need the services.
So it's just three-year-olds, not, not fours?
Just three-year-olds, okay. They have to turn, they, generally, if they turn four by September 1st, they're serviced within our 4K. But occasionally, a kid has stayed in early childhood for a second.
Right.
Or possibly third year. They could do this for two years, because they could turn three September 5th. I'll use my own daughter for example. If you turn three on September 5th, you're going to go that full year. Then you're going to go the next full year under your three-year-old year, because you don't turn four until September 5th, so you don't qualify for 4K.
Gotcha.
How do the children get over there?
We bus them.
Questions? Okay, thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Bob DiPerio.
Aye.
Rachel Davies. Aye.
Dr. Imperial.
Aye.
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Approval of co-curricular resignation.
I move the board to approve the resignation of Mr. Justin Anan as an assistant football coach for the 2015-2016 school year.
Second.
Moving second to approve co-curricular resignation. Discussion? Questions? Comments? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies. Aye.
Dr. Imperial.
Aye.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. The next one is approval of other post-employment benefits expansion to administrators, middle management, and secretarial staff. If you recall, we're in the verge of doing something with other post-retirement benefits, and this equalizes it amongst all the staff. Right now, some of the staff does not get post-retirement benefits, the administrators, middle management, and secretarial staff. This makes an even playing field for all the... the entire staff. So, I'll take a motion to that effect.
Okay. Well, I will move that administrators, middle managers, and the secretarial staff be included in consideration for post-retirement benefits currently under discussion.
Second.
You're a second, did you say?
Yes, I said second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve equal distribution of other employment benefits to the administrators, middle management, and secretarial staff. Comments? Questions?
I think the one thing that I would like to be clear about is that we have made no decision as to the actual benefits that are going to be extended to any particular group, and this just brings these other employees into the discussion.
That's correct. There's no monetary amount at this point.
But they'll be a part of the fold by this motion.
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
Any other comments?
Just curious, do... What do other districts do? Do we know? Is this typical? I just don't know the...
Well, it varies from district to district.
Okay.
Yeah, pretty much. And I don't... I can't speak for other districts. And it only seems reasonable to me that everybody's on this equal playing field, that everybody gets equal access to post-retirement benefits.
Why have we historically not done that?
I don't know. That's a good question.
Yeah. That's why I had my question. I wondered what the... Why? What the deal was, yeah.
I don't know. Any other questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Dr. Imperial.
Aye.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Richard Davies.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of 15-16 custodial contracts.
I move the board to approve custodian contracts to Ms. Kim Jacobson and Mr. Jerry Hiljendorf for the 2015-2016 school year.
Second.
Moving second to approve custodial contracts. Any questions on that? Comments?
And it's my understanding that these positions are open due to retirements?
Yes.
Hey, we have a copy of the applications letters in our packet.
Okay, roll call, please.
Donna Thomas.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Dr. Imperial.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of CISA II contract for the 15-16 school year. This is a continuous contract, Rachel, for your information, from year to year. CISA II provides some services to us, and we pay a certain amount for the contract.
For the record, could we say what CISA is?
CISA is a Cooperative Educational Service Agency. For our... We're in CISA II, which covers the whole area from Madison to almost Racine-Kinoshka, Yarkville.
I move the board to approve the 2015-2016 contract for services from CISA II.
Second.
Moving second to approve CISA II contract. Questions? Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions about the contract. The contract... Every year, the contract changes, which is not changing this year, but there's a menu of services...
Yes.
That changes all the time. And this year, it says we're... That $14,000 for blind and visually impaired. Do we have school... Students at the school for the deaf, or... Or the blind?
One student who received services, he's actually split between here and the school for the blind. And he receives... We contract with CISA II for vision impaired teacher, who services the student here and at the school for the blind.
That's our highest amount.
Yep.
And I take it that school nutrition is for the bidding of products, for the food service that we're going to be talking about?
I think they've also provided some professional development to our staff on food service.
For food service, yeah.
That's what I was going to ask. I see there's a table on here with all kinds of different...